Ellie Matsumura. Enrico Calender. Frank Madski.
Here.
Garrick Percival.
Here.
George Sanchez. We Tran. Jeremy Berus.
Here.
Jose Pesadas.
Here.
Lund Diep. Linda Lazot. Luis Barocchio.
Here.
Magnolia Segal.
Present.
Maria Fuentes.
Here.
Sammy Rablado.
Here.
Sherry Segura.
Here.
T Tran. Tobin Gilman.
Here.
Veronica Amador. Yong Zhao.
Here.
And Frederick Ferrer.
Here, and we have a question. Thank you, I appreciate commissioners taking their Saturday morning and donating it to our city's benefit. It's good to see you all again. This morning, we have a public hearing, and the public hearing is designed for the commissioners to hear from the public. We have four presentations this morning. These are coming out of a subcommittee of the commission, and these are the four recommendations they're making to the full commission. They made these at our last meeting. They'll be repeating those presentations today for the public's input. We will then move to public input. The format that we'll be using is we will be having each of the speakers present their recommendation first, and then we'll hear from the public on that recommendation. Then we'll have the next recommendation, and then hear from the public again. So there'll be four opportunities for the public to give us input on the four individual sets of recommendations. And at this time, I'm going to ask our first commissioner this morning to present the recommendations from the subcommittee. Commissioner Madski.
Thank you Chair Ferrer. And as the chair mentioned, this proposal is the same one that was there on Monday. What we plan to do is take the input received both on Monday and today, and see if there's any changes that we want to make before we take it to the full commission. So I have nothing formally prepared. The item is, you can see the full proposal on the agenda. It's fairly simple, so I'm just going to speak directly to it. It really is addressing the future charter review commissions and whether we should have, how they should happen or not. So as, I think a lot of people are aware, the last charter review commission occurred more than 35 years ago, and a lot has changed in San Jose since that time. And so the thought being is that we may want to have a regular review of the charter more often than 35 years. Also, the previous charter review commissions and this one are advisory only to the council. And so the thought being is that, you know, perhaps we want to do a little bit more. And it's sort of those two issues that I want to speak to is should there be future charter review commissions? And what authority should the commission have? So what this proposal does, it includes language into the charter that requires a charter review commission to occur every 10 years. One of the hottest issues that we're facing in this particular commission is how big should the council be? And so there's been some very interesting discussion along those lines. And so with that in mind, the thought was that we should probably have a charter review commission in advance of the census, since that question may still come up, is how large should the council be? That it would make sense to have it every 10 years, and it would occur two years prior to receiving the census. So in this case, the next one would start in the year 2028, and we'd give the commission two years to look at any potential revisions before going to the council. And that in case that impacted the work that needs to be done after the city received the census. So that's the primary issue. As I mentioned, it was also advisory only, and so what this does is suppose there is broad support for a particular change to the charter by the commission, yet the council still has the ability to basically ignore it or to vote it down. And so what the other item in this proposal is that if there is a super majority by this commission, and we based it on, again, two individuals per council district plus three from the mayor, so it'll be the same makeup as it is today. If there were 17 commissioners who thought that there should be a particular change in the charter, then it would require a super majority by the council, and in this case, eight of the 11 members to vote to reject it. And if not, it would move forward onto the ballot. So that's kind of, that's the, that's that particular provision. The numbers of 17 and eight are roughly 75% of the total. Doesn't exactly like that. I know we did get some input on Monday that perhaps we want to change it to a percentage rather than a number, and that would be simplify it, because if the members, the number of members did change, then we would have to change this provision as well to account for that. So we'll be looking at that particular change as well. So with that, it's really, you know, three questions. Should there be a future charter commission? Does it make sense to have it every 10 years before the census? And then three, should there be some provision to allow the commission to have a little bit more authority than just advisory? So with that, Chair Ferrer, I will open it up to a public comment.
Thank you Commissioner Madski. And now we hear from the public on this set of recommendations, and the clerk can call the first speaker.
Just a second, almost there. Veronica? Oh, I think she's our commissioner. Brett Bymaster.
Hello, this is Brett Bymaster. I'm the executive director at Healing Grove Health Center. I want to direct you to take a look at the report that Healing Grove just released. We have commissioned a set of 20 or 30 volunteers, Spanish-speaking people, to go out and collect data on the desires of the Spanish-speaking community, particularly undocumented immigrants, on direction for the charter commission. So take a look at, go to bit.ly/sjcharter2021. Again, that's bit.ly/sjcharter2021. And I encourage you to really take a careful look at that report. So by a 2/3 margin, Spanish-speaking Latinos of the more than 350 families that we surveyed prefer a council manager form, like weak mayor as opposed to a strong mayor form. 2/3 of respondents also prefer for the police chief to be appointed by a majority of the council instead of appointed by the city manager. And we found that respondents were split 50/50 on whether we should move the mayoral elections to the presidential cycle versus the midterm cycle. So I'd love to encourage you to take a look at that, you know, having that sort of data, getting, you know, Spanish-speaking data from immigrants is a challenge, and that's really great data. We'll continue that work, and we expect to have 400 to 500 respondents by the end. I do think it's important to note that a lot of the reason that people want to stay with the council manager system and limit mayoral powers is because that for minority groups, the mayor represents the whole city, only 30% of which is Latino-Spanish speaking. And so they want power to stay in the councils so that they have representation, particularly from districts that have majority Spanish-speaking folks. So I think that's an important thing to note. I'd love to encourage you, again, bit.ly/sjcharter2021.
Alina Yen.
Good morning, commissioners. I just want to reiterate what I had said on Monday, which is Frank, I do appreciate this presentation, and I support that we should have regular charter review commissions in place. And part of that is, I feel that, you know, as much as, you know, tech companies update their terms and conditions, because that's their most important document that protects whatever they're doing and enables them to do whatever it is they're doing, that we should take the same approach with our charter, because the world is changing. It has changed a lot in the last two years. And not updating our constitutional document on a regular basis, I think exposes our city and our community to vulnerabilities with, doesn't enable us to respond to the present circumstances at, you know, our fullest capacity. And, you know, I'd also like to share that, you know, in the same way that we take an approach to the civic education around our city budget to make it an inclusive process, I think we should take that approach, you know, with our city charter in, before that 10-year mark, so that we can provide education, and that could, you know, help improve the quality of recruited residents that want to participate in this process. But it also sets them up for success, because they have all the tools and resources that they need to do a good job at, you know, reviewing whatever changes or amendments that will bring, you know, our founding documents, you know, our constitutional documents, to make sure that it's serving everybody and effectively. As far as the other details that we spoke about last, sorry, Monday, about whether it goes straight to the voters, I'm not sure about that process or detail yet. But I do appreciate, you know, the thoroughness and all the options being offered and shared today. So thank you Frank, and thank you commissioners for spending this Saturday morning with us.
Leveire Foster, followed by Matt King.
Hi, my name is Leveire Foster, and I represent African-American Community Service Agency. And similar to what was just said, I would support future charter review commissions every 10 years. You know, as our city constantly evolves, it's important that the commission convenes, and I especially like the idea of the commission convening prior to the census, and for the commission to have more power, however that looks like. Yeah, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Matt King, followed by Tam Nguyen.
Good morning, everybody. Matt King from Sacred Heart Community Service. I do support having a every 10-year charter commission. I want to second pretty much all of Alina's comments. I'm a little uncertain about the power to put things on the ballot. There's a lot I like about it, but I think it requires more conversation and thinking about, well, will we just recreate a council dynamic where everyone will be so worried about what are they going to put on the ballot, that it'll just result in people appointing kind of political seconds, proxies, to have a council fight on the charter commission instead? And I don't think we want that. So I'm not sure what we should do about that, and I just think it requires more conversation and more conversation with more people. Thanks.
Tam Nguyen. Tam Nguyen, go ahead. Okay, I'm gonna, that was our final speaker for this, this item. So, oh, Roma Dawson just put her hand up, so Roma.
Thank you for letting me jump in late. And I'm very grateful to the subcommittee for bringing forward this idea, because it seems rather absurd to wait 35 years. And of course, the council can choose to put something on a ballot any Tuesday. So we have seen many, many ballot measures come forward. I'm just wondering if rather than mandating every 10 years the formation of a charter review, if it wouldn't give the public more opportunity to engage if we just said, put something in the charter that said, "The formation of a charter review commission should appear on the city council agenda periodically." It could be once a year, it could be every five years or proceeding. But that way, I think that if it's on a council agenda, if there are people out there that really want the commission formed, it will come forward. It will come forward, and it's a little bit less prescriptive. I'm always hesitant of the city charter being overly prescriptive. And again, thank you very much, commissioners.
Kim and Tam Nguyen again.
Hi, yeah, finally I was able to unmute myself. My name is Tam Nguyen. I am with Viva Foundation San Jose. In the past two months, we have conducted four public meetings involving committee members. And the consensus is, first of all, we appreciate our agreement with the commission recommendation of having the meeting in 10 years or so, so we are more relevant. Secondly, we, a lot of people, most of them agree with the previous speakers to keep the South Bay Council and the mayor's, which is the South Bay Council and manager arrangement. We don't want a strong mayor. And then third and last, but at least, we, a lot of people oppose to the idea of moving the election date, because the reason moving the date of the year election doesn't make more people voting. The same people will vote, and which means we don't need to move every election to try to get more votes. So that's why the consensus of the community, we want to report you, and thank you for your good work.
Back to the commission.
Thank you, that was the final speaker. Just for the public record, I am, the chair only votes in the case of a tie. I assume that I most likely won't be voting on many issues, and that's fine. I just would ask, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't influence any of the discussion at the commission level nor at the public level, but I would add to the subcommittee, since you're taking stuff back, I would ask that you consider another idea in terms of the 10 years. Because of the census being every 10 years and redistricting being looked at, my idea would be that we have a commission every eight years for a two-year term. So that at the eighth year, the commission is formed, they have a two-year term, and so they would always be ahead of the census. So if they wanted to change the amount of council districts, they would do that within their two-year frame. They'd be able to study the issue at all issues. At the end of their term, at the end, at that 10th year, right before the census, the census committees would then have the information that they need to be able to make the changes in the council districts. Otherwise, I think there's always going to be this conflict of redistricting commissions being tied moving forward as the census comes out, and then you have a charter commission always being out of sync. So my idea is eight years, every eight years for a two-year term, first year being a lot of the study of the issue, the community engagement, and the second year really being the recommendations, and then being able to complete their report to the council in, before the council has to deal with redistricting and the census. So that's just another idea for your census, for your subcommittee to look at as well. And I do, I do want to make sure that the subcommittee also is sensitive, and the public is sensitive to the legal opinion that we received on Monday, which was that the members of the commission, if it had authority to put something on the ballot, would be subject, because they have some kind of legislative authority, they would be different in terms of the qualifications they would need to meet in terms of conflict of interest. So I think the subcommittee should just be careful around knowing that if they do that, the challenge of putting commissioners on this commission is going to be different. It won't be necessarily better or worse, but it'll be different, because everybody will have to complete a Form 700, and all the conflicts of interest would be in place. And that would change the dynamic of who serves on a commission like this. So just two pieces that I thought are important for the subcommittee to look at as well. Our second speaker this morning with the second set of recommendations is Commissioner Marshman. Commissioner Marshman?
Thank you, and thank you all for coming. Could I ask our clerk, or how many members of the public we have here? It does not show for us. 22? 22, great. Thank you all.
Commissioner Marshman, this is Lawrence. Would you like me to share the?
Yes, please. The updated memo, thank you. We had, we had a, an outdated memo on the, with some mistakes in it originally on the agenda, but caught it, and we've got the right one now, thank you. So my topic has been touched on by Fred, Commissioner Ferrer, about redistricting and whether we should consider adding council districts, and how many, and when. So, so just to briefly recap, you're probably all aware of this, but 1978 initiative changed the city from electing everyone at large to doing district elections. And it was a huge improvement as far as representing communities that had long been ignored. There were 10 council districts created, and that's still what we've been dealing with 30 years later. So we think it's time to consider looking at expanding that, although I'm not certain it's a panacea for the problems that, that people feel they have with representation. I think there are a lot of questions. So this is the least specific recommendation you're going to hear this morning. Everybody else kind of knows this. We got this idea late, came to us late, and we feel it needs a lot more work. So when, when the districts were created, the city was around 600,000, over 600,000 people. So each of the 10 districts had 60,000 roughly residents. Now the city is over a million people, so we have more than 100,000 people in each council district, which is a lot. However, of the 10, we are the 10th largest city still in the country. And of the 10 largest, six of them have 11 or fewer council members. So, and, and one of the ones that has a lot of them, Chicago, we have been told is a very different, it has 50. It has more people than we do, but it has 50 council members, and, you know, not that many per district. But we're told that's a very political system and probably does not lead to more attention on constituents. It's just a different dynamic in the council, and that's something we have to watch for. We want to look at Seattle, which has 25 council members, is a little smaller than San Jose, but kind of the same scale city. And, and I don't know yet, because we have not, we have not identified good sources to give us honest opinions in Seattle, but it's, I don't know whether that's a change that was made, or whether it's always had that number of districts. And I don't know what the dynamic is on the city council. So lots of study here, and things like cost. I know some people feel that cost shouldn't matter if we want to do this, but cost always matters, not in, not in questions of ethical right or wrong, no. But this is a strategic question. This is whether this is going to give disadvantaged communities in particular better representation. We all know that even now, some districts do much better, some council members do much better at outreach and engagement and keeping people involved in decision-making than others do. And that doesn't always correspond to income level in the district or anything else. It's just, it depends on the person, and that would still be the case in more districts. So some of the questions we'll want to be looking at is whether there is any identifiable correlation between effective representation or good city government with, with smaller districts, with more council members. And looking at, I mean, some of, some of the cities that have much smaller districts or smaller cities, a small city like Santa Clara has, has seven council members and very small districts compared to San Jose. It's not much bigger than a one council district in San Jose. But those are, those are not full-time council members. They, they receive stipends, but nearly all of them have full-time jobs, and, and the council job is, is designed for someone who is not counting on it for their living. So that's something else we have to take into consideration. Else was I going to say? Well, maybe I'll just turn it over to you. This huge question still on how many districts, whether we should do it all, and, and other factors. And I'd just like to hear your opinions on whether we should spend time pursuing this. And if we do, one of the things we have to consider that I neglected to mention was whether to ask that this be done midterm before the next census. It's too late now to, for voters to enact this change by, by next year's elections. That's just not possible, the redistricting commission, which, by the way, you should pop in on if you can. It's very interesting, they're on Zoom. Is, is hard at work now, and it's going to be difficult, they say, to, to keep roughly similar boundaries to what we've had, you know, pretty much over time. And, and so big changes may be ahead, and that may be a good or bad thing. We'll want to talk to them about whether they think adding maybe two council districts would improve the, the ability to group communities of interest. Okay, comments, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshman, and we'll turn it over to the public on these set of questions and the recommendations that are in the memo.
Chair.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think as far as redistricting, just in my opinion, I think that it should, I don't think it's something we should go forward with right now. I think we're, you know, we're struggling to come out of the pandemic, and, you know, we just have a lot of issues that we're dealing with right now. We've got this SB 9, SB 10 going, which may, you know, some housing, we don't know what that's going to do as far as the population shift and stuff. I think we need to settle in for, let things settle in for a while with all, so many recent changes, especially to the zoning and stuff, and see, you know, how things, you know, map out. And as well as, I think, you know, if there are equity or, or other issues that people are worried, or representation, I think we need to really look at the root causes and see why we haven't been able to address those as a city to begin with, instead of just saying, well, more council districts will fix it. Because a lot of times, just a government shift like that never addresses the real problem. You know, so I think we need to spend time on what are these issues, what's going on? How can we work as a community together? And why they're not, you know, things aren't being addressed, instead of saying, let's just shift government again. You know, I think that's just a big all-catch-all to give some hope, instead of looking at what's really going on and coming up with some solutions. Anyway, so I don't think, I don't think redistricting, especially at this time, is really the answer. Anyway, thank you.
Roma Dawson?
Thank you, and I want to thank Commissioner Marshman for bringing this important issue forward. And I'm going to speak as someone that's been a council aide, frequently, all the way going back to the late 1980s, all the way to Mayor Licardo's first term as a council member. And I will tell you that there is a vast difference in workload among districts, and that frequently relates to those districts that have higher rates of poverty. Also, sometimes certain issues can simply blow up the council office. And when I hear people say, "My city doesn't listen to me," I often wonder if, oh, wow, that's somebody that didn't get a call returned right away from a council office. And if you look at how small the staffs are, it is extremely difficult to stay on top of everything and get a timely response back. And maybe it's increasing the size of the districts, maybe it isn't, maybe it's increasing the budget. But I do believe that this is a serious equity issue and ought to be framed in terms of equity and brought forward to city council. And you have a wonderful opportunity to sort of bifurcate what you're doing. You have specific recommendations you can make, and also to be changed in the charter immediately. And you can bring forward a strong set of recommendations of what you want to see happen in the future. And you can bring forward a strong set of recommendations of what you want to see happen in the future. And I know you're thinking that way, and I very much appreciate that discussion. This would be one of those items I would bring forward as a package and say, Council, you must look at this at a later date. Thank you.
Matt King.
Hi again, Matt King at Sacred Heart Community Service. I am aligned with a lot of what Commissioner Marshman shared. And that's the question of whether or not our city needs to look at that. I think it's just basic good government to take this issue very seriously and do a lot of work and figure out whether we should have new districts and what and what that would entail and what we could accomplish by doing it. And it would be irresponsible to not look at it. So definite strong support for for going forward with this. Thanks.
Alina Yin.
Hi, Commissioners. I also agree that this proposal should go forward and that we should take a serious look at it as well as all of the logistics that I know that still needs to be ironed out. And I kind of want to equate this to something that I shared in previous public comments. If we think about this with an analogy of teacher and students, you know, the the larger the classroom group, the harder it is for the teacher to really connect with each student and provide them the support that they need. And as I think Roma Dawson mentioned, that not all of the workload is equal in each district. What that means is like, you know, maybe those folks need more resources because that's what equity is. It's about investing and reallocating the resources where it's most needed. And in the same way that it's been shown statistically that smaller class sizes are, you know, better for students. I think smaller council districts and more district representation would only increase the relationship and representation of the diversity of our community. And yes, it is difficult. And, you know, the staff of the city is very small for the size of our city. But, you know, that has to do with taxing and how we zone our property, and that's a completely different subject. But the people that have been part of this, watching this commission and participating, they have shown up and they have spoken in favor of increasing district representation. And so thank you, Commissioner Marshman, for putting this together. I think that we should put a lot of attention into, you know, how we address accountability and equity. And I think this is one of the the key proposals that will really help us achieve that and move in the right direction. And so thank you for that. And again, I really hope that the commission considers moving this proposal forward. Thank you.
Brett Bymaster.
Hi, this is Brett Bymaster, Healing Grove Health Center. I think we have to be really careful about thinking about increasing the size of the council. One of the things that we found in our research on the council manager form is that the the key to that working is being able to develop consensus. And as everybody knows, the larger the team is, the harder it is to develop consensus. And so getting 11 people on board with something currently is pretty tough. Making it 12 or 14 makes it even harder. So I think actually that increasing the council size is counterproductive, although it increases representation. That representation gets watered out when it comes to the decisions on the on the full council. And so we would advocate for keeping the council to stay a council of 10 plus plus a voting mayor.
Tam Nguyen.
Oh, this is Tam Nguyen again. Thank you very much. I appreciate Commissioner Marshman bringing up the issue of district representation. From the consensus for the community, I put, people believe there's a much bigger issue, which is more urgent, more relevant, and more important to the city and to to this commission. It is the voter turnout. People mentioned before on the east side in the tour of the district, seven, six, five, and three, so on. The voters turnout rate is extremely painfully low over the past few years or so. We have some effort to address the issue, but now on, from now on, we think this is more urgent than anything else. So we urge this commission to pay attention, take note of this issue, and I request to put this issue onto the agenda of the commission from now on, because I think it's more important than anything else, including the proposal of changing the year to increase the voting. Why we still have the same low voter turns out. The next issue would be, to be brief, is the digital divide. A lot of poor people are kept behind. For the past two months, we have a very hard time in terms of heavy people installing Zoom to to participate. So those are the two issues that would like the commission to give consideration, and thank you very much.
Back to the commission.
Thank you, members of the public, for your great feedback. We'll now go to our third set of recommendations from Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Ferrer. I'm gonna share my screen right now. All right, is everyone able to see this? Great. Thank you all for joining us this morning. So my memo was about expanding the oral powers. We've been discussing whether we should move our form of governance system a lot in the past several months. And we've gone through study sessions and talked to past mayors and city managers. And I've had a lot of discussions within my subcommittee group about it as well. And our recommendation is to keep our council format the same. Oh, sorry, it disappeared really quickly. Let me try to pull it back up. Okay. And so when we look at what our current structure looks like right now, we have a council manager structure, but ours is more of a hybrid. So the mayor already is given a little more power than they would be under a typical traditional council manager. So as you can see here, the mayor is able to nominate as certain positions are ready. And I'm having technical issues. And they're also able to set up what their budget message is as a direction for their term, which doesn't usually happen under a traditional council manager format where the city manager would prepare that budget. So this is why I'm proposing no change to our form of government. I am arguing to keep the current council manager form of governance to maintain equitable representation and a fair democratic process. We've had a lot of, we've heard a lot of feedbacks during our meeting. And among the commissioners ourselves, we all have agreed that equity and inclusion and representation are very core issues that we want to focus on when we think of making our recommendations. I know for a lot of community, their council members, their first point of contact when it comes to accessing city services. And we, this is why we shouldn't limit the power of council members. So changing to a mayor council form governance will siphon the ready preexisting democratic powers of the council to one person, the mayor. This will decrease overall equitable representation, accountability, and inclusion, which will conflict with our Council Directive 5, which was given to the commission, which is consider additional measures and potential charter amendments as needed that will improve accountability, representation, and inclusion at San Jose City Hall. So through these sessions, we've also learned how important the city manager position is and how a lot of our community members are not well acquainted with what the city manager does. So I do propose to expand the city manager nomination process to include council members as well. And this would allow the council to submit if they chose to or back another council member's nomination, which will foster collaboration and ensure equitable representation by allowing council members to submit applicants that align with their constituents' values. And this would help us fulfill our Council Directive 5, which I mentioned earlier. Basically, I think that opening up this process would would allow for more collaboration and make it more democratic when it comes to to selecting a city manager, which we know is a very, very important and powerful position within our city government now. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson, and we'll now move to the public to speak to this, these set of recommendations.
Our speaker is Robert White. Robert, go ahead. Okay, I'm going to give him time to, maybe he may have stepped away from his computer, so I'm going to move on to Brett Bymaster, followed by Tam Nguyen.
Hi, Brett Bymaster, Executive Director at Healing Grove Health Center. I just want to again direct you to the report that we have where we were able to solicit the thoughts of more than 350 low-income Spanish-speaking immigrants, bit.ly slash SJ Charter 2021. One of the really significant things we found is that policing is at top of mind for a lot of people. And so people are more concerned about the police chief than the city manager. I think it's really important in this process that we give a lot of thought to how the the police chief is appointed. So having the police chief appointed by the city manager kind of separates it from the democratic process by a step. So we would really ask that the commission considers making both the police chief and the city manager by majority appointment of the council. So a similar process to what was just outlined. Thank you, Commissioner, for for that. Similar process of the the council would have the ability to nominate people for police, for chief of police. And it would be directly written into the city charter that the the chief of police had to be approved by by majority of the city council. I think that's the best way to ensure that we both hold our police accountable to caring for our community and ensuring that we achieve public safety and that particularly communities of of color who experience the most policing are able to, you know, to to have influence on the way policing is working.
Tam Nguyen, followed by Alina Yin.
Again, this time, thank you very much, Commissioners. I really appreciate the presentation of Commissioner Johnson. And it does reflect the vast majority of the community input when our people perform our committee, our meeting. As being as a former council member myself, I think the current mayor's situation and relationship already has vast power, including the rules, many chairman of the of the council and especially the budget memos, so on and so forth. So I think what whatever we have right now is very good, and it does reflect the function of our city as it is. So again, I thank you for your work, and we will really coincide with the public input on this matter. Thank you.
Alina Yin, followed by Roma Dawson.
Good morning. I thank you for the presentation, and I feel that this presentation, I'm sorry, this proposal should move forward. I do feel that we should stay with our current council manager system. And, you know, I also appreciate the details that highlight how the mayor already has power in this current council manager system that we've adapted in our own way. And, you know, the mayor being able to put forth the the budget message and the memo and, I think, propose the budget, that's a very powerful part of the process because allocating how and where money is spent is part of, you know, making sure that certain programs, you know, receive priority. And also in I'm going blank, sorry, Saturday morning. And in terms of the nomination powers, I think that's also a good proposal to put forth because any person that's coming in will be working with all council members. And I think each council member, through their unique lived experience, present a specific a specific filter and perspective of what skills would be helpful in being a city manager or what values would be more representative of everyone in San Jose. And so opening that up and making that a more democratic process, I think, will improve collaboration. And overall, I support this proposal moving forward. Thank you.
Roma Dawson.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for bringing the the proposal forward. And I'm not going to not going to say whether I prefer a city manager, city manager council form of government or mayor council, because I think that doesn't take into account the many nuanced hybrid models that are out there and available, something like Kansas City, a city half the size of San Jose. I I do feel that this is the primary charge of this commission. I mean, I see this as really the overwhelming number one issue to decide. Do we need to tweak our current form of city manager government? Do we need to move to something where the mayor is the CEO? I've listened to every single meeting, and I've not heard a robust discussion of a form of governance. And I I just want to express some frustration at that. And I am hoping before this, this is a great commission, and you're diverse, and you are all engaged. I would love to see a public discussion, not just an ad hoc committee where the public wasn't there. I would love to see a robust public discussion of whether we need to tweak it. For example, we've weakened some of the powers of the mayor significantly. The ability to appoint rules is huge. I just heard about that from the city attorney at your last meeting. I I just, before you put this in cement, I just think it deserves more thoughtful discussion and a little bit more research, and I want to hear Dr. Percival's data about police. I found that that comment fascinating. Thank you.
Back to the commission.
Thank you, members of the public, for your comments. And then let's move to our final presentation this morning. I don't Vice Chair Johnson, I thought this was coming from Commissioner Lozot, but I'm not sure she's here.
Yeah, so Commissioner Marshman is going to be presenting on her behalf.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Marshman.
Thank you. And I'm going to be going more from notes here than usual because I'm referring to Linda's material. But I agree with this proposal and along the lines of what what Roma was saying. I this, this is an area where I think I think the committee now is is more or less in in agreement that we ought to do this, which is giving the mayor more power to declare an emergency, a local emergency. And in that situation, giving the mayor the power to act as the director of emergency services, which now is a power given to the city manager. The general public looks to the mayor specifically and and council member generally to be accountable for actions taken by city government. Elected officials expect to be held accountable. But it's frustrating when when something that is a city staff decision is is called into question. And public officials are frustrated because they get blamed. And, you know, it's it's and and the public itself is frustrated because they they don't know who to go to. This, the public does not have direct influence over the city manager, who's a professional. So we have had situations in San Jose. The Coyote Creek flood is the most obvious one where an emergency was called too late. And and it's possible that a mayor with a more direct concern for individuals in the city, voters perhaps, but individuals in the city. I think most most elected officials are respond more responsive to the public. And and might have said earlier, hey, have we have we at least let these folks know the river is coming up? Or they have they been warned? And we've also seen demonstrations at the mayor's house over issues that that the mayor has no authority over. So the charter currently gives the city manager as director of the Office of Emergency Services the duty to request the city council to proclaim the existence or threatened existence of a local emergency if the council is in session. If the council is not in session, which 99 If the council is not in session, which 99% of the time would be the case, I doubt if the big earthquake will hit when the council's in session, but who knows? If the council is not in session, the city manager is to proclaim the city, proclaim the emergency, take on the powers and he has that for seven days. Within seven days, the city council is supposed to either stop the state of emergency or approve it and for another 30 days. Now, this memo, Linda's memo sets forth circumstances to be considered under which the mayor in his or her judgment deems extraordinary measures, measures are required to protect the public peace, safety and welfare. In such an instance, the mayor shall proclaim in writing the existence of the local emergency. Now recognizing that the mayor, we would not want the mayor to, in a state of emergency, take on all the powers of the city attorney, of the city manager to manage the city. So the charter would have to be changed to to isolate the emergency services powers and give those to the to the mayor for the period of the emergency. And to eliminate some folks worried that a mayor could declare an emergency and fire the whole city staff or something. Couldn't do that. It would be very limited to to the emergency at hand. But it would give the mayor the possibility to move resources and and get, you know, people working out of their normal normal function. Additionally, in this proposal, the mayor or the vice mayor, if if the mayor is unavailable, has to obtain ratification by the city council within 72 hours. Now remember, the city manager has a week to do that. I have a little, I understand people, people didn't want to leave it more open. The only situation I can think of where 72 hours might not work would be a major earthquake with a lot of casualties, no electricity and so on. So we might want to think about about that, but definitely 72 hours should be the target for the council to weigh in under if at all possible. This proposal is to just make it flat within 72 hours where the state of emergency ends. The mayor would not be acting in a vacuum, taking this on. The mayor will be working with the city manager, with the whole city emergency services team. The mayor would need some training or his, perhaps someone on his staff would would take on more training, more expertise to deal with this. That's what San Francisco, Los Angeles and and some other cities do. Fair number of cities do expect the mayor to be in control. So this is a matter of the mayor being able to make judgment calls based on what they believe the city residents would would want and and need. And the city manager's judgment can be can be great too, but it's it's, I might be a little more directed to systems than than people. And and so that's basically the proposal. Let's let's hear what you think. It comes under our charge of promoting accountability and and by by giving the mayor this more emergency power, the people would have someone to praise if everything is wonderful and to hold accountable if everything is not wonderful in a response to an emergency.
Thank you, Commissioner. Marshman will start from the public. Those wishing to speak to these set of recommendations.
Yeah, the first speaker is Tom Izou, followed by Matt King.
Members of the commission, my name is Tom Izou. I'm a resident of San Jose and a chapter leader of the Santa Clara Valley of the ACLU of Northern California. I'm providing public comment on and in response to recommendation for emergency powers of the mayor. In the last year, especially in response to the national movement calling attention to police violence, we have seen that emergency powers have been used to impose curfews on our communities. Any proposal detailing emergency powers must ensure adequate safeguards to protect civil liberties and should include an explicit presumption against citywide curfews. Additionally, city council should concurrently be made aware when issuing an emergency order. Thank you very much for your time.
Matt King, followed by Alina Yin.
Good morning again, Matt King. I am wondering if I'm the only superstitious person in this meeting who's now convinced an earthquake is going to hit during a city council meeting. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. So since Monday night, I have been running around trying to talk to a lot of people about this and bring some consensus from folks who are people who have protested at the mayor's house and were affected by and very much against the curfew. And people who are engaged politically at a street grassroots level. And kind of what people coalesce around is that there's a couple of values here. One is accountability and transparency around that accountability and checks on power. And another one is earthquakes and floods and political events are not the same and shouldn't be treated the same. So I think people I have spoken with generally feel fine about if there's an earthquake, great, the mayor can call an emergency. But if it's a situation that is a political situation where we're talking about civil liberties being at risk, then we cannot have one person have the power to call that. And that the the power that we could give the mayor is the authority to convene an emergency council meeting that could be online and would be streamed and distributed through all of the channels and needing to get six people. And cognizant of the city attorney's comments the other day about the difference between percentage and number, we do mean six people on the council to agree that this rises to the level of emergency. And then an emergency could be called. Again, this is specifically relating to a political situation. And we would need to do some work to identify what those types of situations are, in addition to the one last summer where the curfew was called. Thank you.
Alina Yin.
I I agree with the the spirit of this proposal, which is I think it's worth checking for cracks in our disaster planning protocol, such as natural disasters. But overall emergencies power, that needs specificity because that's what keeps abusive power in check is accountability measures. Without that, you are creating an environment where abuse could happen. And I think we need to be careful about acting from an insular perspective because increasing mayoral powers during emergencies that are not natural disasters, that is a protest, is inconsequential to some communities. It won't pack, impact them negatively. But it stands to have a devastating and life-threatening impact for communities of color. And if you dismiss those concerns, that's because of your privilege. And it is your due diligence to put those equity lenses on and not do that. That's why we're here. And also, you know, to echo what Commissioner Calendar had said the last meeting is that now we're getting into, you know, politics and emergency planning where those two should not mix. Because during an emergency, we need to be able to come together quickly and take care of each other. And, you know, that is very different from a protest. And so I think we should be talking about emergency plans. But I don't think that we should be brushing off people's concerns without, you know, respect to their very valid concerns about their safety in expanding and not being specific about what we mean by emergency powers. And so I agree that we should really look at this from a natural disaster perspective. And to really add as much as we can to that because we live where we live and, you know, part of this is that we're not going to see it coming. It's just going to happen. And so we need to be ready at any moment. And so we need to be talking about this and planning for this. But I do not agree about, you know, adding a protest to emergency powers because I don't think that is that type of emergency. Thank you.
Carol Watts, followed by Cher.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much for your deliberations and having this public statement. My name is Carol Watson. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of San Jose, Santa Clara. And by the way, I do want to say that we have not deliberate deliberately applied our positions to all four of these draft recommendations today, nor held meetings to discuss and agree on the stance we would take. So we were not making any specific statements in supporter of, in opposition to the first three recommendations. But we do intend to do so in the future because we think they're very important. We have held some meetings and discussed this recommendation, however, number four. And we're we're pleased with the changes that were made in the draft, which was posted on Thursday, but we still have some issues with the recommendation. In general, and part of this discussion, I hope we're correct about this fact. We believe that the operation of the city should be done with a skilled workforce of professional staff with the education and experience to bring the know-how needed to carry out the policies and priorities. So it, we're not so sure that it's prudent for the non-professional, the mayor, to take over the city operations during emergencies. And maybe that's not part of the memo anymore. So I've got to want to be sure about that first. We do would recommend that there be a provision for declaring an end to these emergency powers. And maybe there should be a review of the necessity for declaring them in the first place. I would love to see a comparison between how the emergency processes work today, both on paper and in practice, and how they would work with the proposed changes. And I want to thank you very much for your deliberation and your desire to hear from the public.
Cher.
Yeah, just a couple of things I'd like to add is when you're talking about the various types of emergencies, if you're going to be looking into this, I think we should make sure and have the full scope of anything that could happen. I mean, even if we had a localized health emergency, like, you know, COVID was obviously, you know, the whole world. But, you know, if we had some type of health emergency that just started or was, you know, in our city, you know, somebody needs to act and say who has powers over health emergency, even though maybe eventually it would go to the county or something. But we need to know what our city council mayor can or can't do for health emergency. And then I think the other thing, you know, there's other natural disasters and things, but there's also, you know, we got the airport here. What happens if a, you know, a plane crashes here? Does the into the city take off or landing? You know, just if you're examining things, we should say what powers does the mayor have or not have, even though, you know, fire and police and all that. But I think are are going to be involved. But I think we should just look into the whole scope of all kinds of situations if we're going to be, you know, studying something like this or making decisions. That's that's my input. Thanks.
Back to the commission.
Thank you. And I just make recommendation to the subcommittee to make sure that we're super clear to the public about what the current powers are of the city manager, including what types of emergency the city manager can call for, so that we are clear about what we're talking about in terms of is this a difference for the mayor, position of the mayor, or is this just a substitution? So I think that's the only piece that I'd ask the subcommittee to be really clear about. Because I'm hearing from the public about new powers or a different like, and I believe the commissions, the subcommittee's intent is only to speak to the substitution of the manager and the mayor in terms of the same role that the manager plays, only now being in the hands of the mayor. And the mayor would have more restrictions in terms of going to council faster. But everything else is essentially the same as it is currently in the charter and currently in protocol. Just so that we're super clear about that. And the power of the of the mayor's role in this, I think, is the other piece that we just want to make sure that we're really clear about in the memo. So that when we are in the debate of this, that we, the last comment is that we will be debating these things again, once we do in the voting piece. So we're hearing from the public, but I do anticipate a very lively discussion amongst the commission around when we start to look at taking actions on these to further make recommendations. I'd encourage members of the public to continue to engage with us. We really appreciate your participation. We will also be having this discussion again at the commission meeting. And does the clerk have anything last items for us?
Um, no, we just have open forum.
That's what I was going to. Okay. So at this point, we are going to have a public comment on any item that the public wishes to address that is pertinent to this commission and we'll ask the clerk to call the first speaker.
Alina Yin.
Commissioners, I have a correction to my comment. I had forgotten to mention so on the, and thank you Fred for clarifying on the powers of the mayor and where that power should lie. I wouldn't say that it should automatically go to the mayor. I feel like there needs to be more study on, you know, how we react in an emergency. And having just one person who doesn't have the disaster training that, you know, should be probably mandatory of anybody who is the, who's going to be making, you know, emergency declarative decisions that affect the the public and our safety. And so on who holds these powers and how they are used, I'm, I don't agree that it should be, you know, just the mayor. I feel like we really need to look into, you know, our emergency plan. And what is the best way to come together to make a decision during an emergency and make sure that everyone's taken care of? And so thank you for this open forum. And thank you again for this public hearing on a Saturday morning.
Pat Richards.
Hello, I live in District One. And yes, thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to speak to an item related to the policing municipal law item on the agenda. So so in our neighborhood, we have an ongoing problem where there's someone looking at business, selling vehicles, often commercial vehicles, and the vehicles are are often unregistered and they're parked on the street. And then it's it's being run by someone that lives with a neighbor and neighbors have asked them to stop doing that. But and it debates, but then it comes back. So it's a recurring problem. And, you know, sometimes there's maintenance being done on the vehicles on the street. There was a school bus for quite a few weeks that got moved around. It's not there this morning. But there is a black BMW with no plates parked on the street. And we've, we've contacted 311, but they, they say it's not, it's there. Anyway, they they don't take any action. I I realize that they're, they, you know, probably have a lot of work to do, but but this is an ongoing problem. So we were wondering what what is the right way to get this addressed? Like, what should we do?
That was the final speaker.
Thank you for the members of the public again for engaging with us. And I appreciate my fellow commissioners being here on a Saturday morning. We're adjourned until our Monday regular commission meeting and we invite you all to join us then. Thank you and have a great weekend.